Hi Mayor, the YouTube channel is live.
So Mark, you're ready?
Okay, at this point, I will go ahead and open up the the Baldwin Park City Council special virtue virtue meeting. Today is May the 20th, 2020. The time is 5:05. So at this point, I will go ahead and have the the city clerk Ms. Gina Yala take roll call.
Thank you, Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez.
Present.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, thank you very much. All right, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and we're going to pledge to the flag and then I will have, or excuse me, have Ricardo Pacheco lead us in an invocation followed by the flag loop. The councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to meet all of us together. Please give our leadership and this community the wisdom to make the right decisions for our community and also protect those workers that are out there, or health and safety workers, or police and firefighters in this time of uncertainty, in this time of pandemic. Please give them the strength and the wisdom to help those that are in need and bless those that they need help, that need our prayers for their time that they're going through this pandemic. Amen.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, we're going to go ahead and do the flag loop. At this point, I'll ask everyone to please stand. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, Madam City Clerk will have some to read them. Okay, oh, five more minutes for a deadline for anyone wishing to call in or email any type items, but, right, so the agenda that we have the listed here, we have the open session, which is the fiscal year 2020-21 budget update by Rose Tran, Finance Director. And then after that, we'll have the consent calendar, which is, we have one, actually, we just have one item that we have on here. Then we'll go into the city council requests as well. So at this point, I will go ahead and go into the budget. Ms. Rose Tran, thank you.
Hello.
If I could just give a little introduction before Rose gets started. Again, this is just an update and it's just sort of a snapshot in time. As you know, all the departments are working towards budget cuts. At the last meeting, we talked about budget cuts for each department of up to 19%. Rose will update us a little bit about that, but just keep in mind, this is still a work in progress and we'll have more information coming to you as we complete these, the work on these cuts.
All right, let me allow me to, I did forget, I want to close on behalf of our legal counsel, Mr. Tafoya's brother Larry, who's also known as Eddie Tafoya, passed last week, so our deepest condolences goes out to our attorney's brother. I had an opportunity to go online to, they had the virtue possession of the brother's funeral services, very, very nice. So our condolences goes out to our legal counsel, Mr. Tafoya. All right, Robert Tafoya. All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Ms. Rose Tran?
Yes, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I want to thank all of you to take, working with us together to take a proactive action to minimize fiscal impact during uncertain times. I am going to provide you some updates since last presentation. As you may see, our general fund reserve balance will be at 5.3 million after the projected from, after the projected deficit from fiscal ending 2020. Next slide. Based on the original adopted fiscal year 2020 budget. And if we are not going to do anything and based on the projected decrease from the revenue, the city will face estimate 6.8 million deficit. Next slide. All department heads and staff work together. And during the last two weeks, after that direction from the city council, and we start making cut from a different area. So the projected deficit reduced to 3.5 million. Next slide, if no questions. So we are going to get further direction from the city council to take more actions to reduce that 3.5 million deficit. And I'm going to present you the next slide to show you what the departments have done to reduce the deficit from 6.8 million to 6, to 3.5 million. So as you may see, because of the current situation and the deep impact on the revenue, and we've expecting about 7 million decrease in the revenue. And the department worked together, as you may see on column two, and that's all the reduction from the departments. About, we cut about 1.2 million. In addition to that 1.2 million, because previously I have set aside the 2.1 million from the expected cannabis revenue due to the current situation and projection, and we believe we would not receive 4.0 million revenue in from the cannabis permit. That's why I removed that 2.1 million set aside. So originally, we were projected 19% cut requirement. And because of the set aside, we put, so the the require or estimate cut would reduce to 15% from 19%. And the blue column shows what the department needs to do to have a further cut, or we can take other actions to reduce that 3.5 remaining deficits from fiscal year 2021. That's my update on the budget presentation. And thank you very much. And I welcome to have any questions you may have.
Rose, did you have a slide on the revenues also?
The revenue? No, I presented the revenue last time already.
Okay, thank you.
So I did not include it here this time.
Okay, any questions or comments for Rose on the presentation?
Rose, yeah, how are we ending on this fiscal year?
This fiscal year 1920, we projected we might have 3.8 million deficit. We will know more when it comes to the end of June 30.
Okay, but are we going to have more study sessions to figure out how we're going to cut that back?
Yes.
Because that deficit is going to carry into the next year, into the 2021?
Yes. That's why in my previous slide, and hi David, could you please bring back the previous slide where we have the general fund balance with a bar chart? Thank you, David. See, as you may see, in 2018, 19, actually, the city has been doing very well, as you may see. And we take, we took city council's direction and all the staff worked very hard. And you have seen fund balance have increased 9.4 million. Unfortunately, things happened and the COVID-19 and also the unexpected decrease in cannabis. And it dropped to, it dropped to 5.3 million.
So in other words, that deficit basically comes out of our emergency reserves, which we would like to keep our emergency reserves between 15 and 18%. So it's okay to dip into them a little bit. This is a little bit too much. Just because it takes, as you see in the graph, it takes a number of years to build those back up. You know, those were a number of years during a good time in the economy. And you see, it took six or seven years to build those reserves up to where they were last year.
And I also want to point out, if we don't take further action with the 3.5 million deficit from the new coming fiscal year, the fund balance will go down to about 2 millions.
Rosa, I have a question. For the 1920 fiscal, the, or the 2021 fiscal also, does that already include the Assistant Chief of Police budget in there and the commissioners? Or commanders, excuse me?
We haven't really get into the salary and benefit area. We haven't have time, enough time to go into all the salary and benefits. And that the other slide, when I showed the cut mainly is from the general operation side, not from the personnel cost side.
So that could increase them because if it's not being included?
If from the previous last organized reorganization report that we presented, it will provide little bit saving for the current fiscal year. When I say current, I mean, sorry, for the coming fiscal year if nothing changed.
If nothing changes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, if that's, if there's no other questions, we can move on.
Hold on, I have some questions. Okay, so ending this fiscal year, we went to our reserves to, to complete paying for this fiscal year?
That's correct. The estimate is about 3.8 million. Again, that's an estimate because we don't have the exact number of, you know, what the final expenditures and revenues will be for the last month or two of the year. But once, once, you know, we get into July and we close the books into July, we pay all the bills for the last year. We close the books, we audit it, and then we'll have more exact numbers.
Hey Janet, Ricardo asked if we balanced, in other words, did we use reserve money for this deficit part of it?
Yes, yes. And that's, and that's what we're showing in this, in this chart. And, you know, why the reserves are dropping almost $3.8 million between 19 and 20. That is the projected use of the reserves for these last few months because of the drops in sales tax and revenues.
So the 150,800 for the Assistant Chief of Police, which fiscal year does that impact? This year or the upcoming one?
That would be in the 2021.
So, okay. 2021. That's if we hire him or her in January. How would it affect, but well, because it's already 2021, you're right, July is coming up, June, July.
Yeah, so, so, you know, the last action, and I think we'll talk about this more later, but the, the, the last action was to freeze that position.
Right.
And that would generate over the six months savings of approximately 150 some thousand dollars.
Yeah, almost 151. Okay, all right, you answered my question. Thank you.
And, and like Rose said, this, this budget tonight, you're seeing it's still a work in progress. We're still going to check down at as much as we can. And we're going to still, still add some of those other savings in that we're looking at doing.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question for you. So for the 2021 budget, you're, you're coming in with a deficit of about 3.5 million?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what Rose is showing right now, but again, for 2021, it's, it's still a work in progress. These are very preliminary numbers. We're going to still be working very hard on these over the next couple of weeks. The plan would be to bring the council another study session on the budget with more exact numbers in the beginning of, of June. And then typically, the second meeting in June, we hold a public hearing and at that point, we will attempt to adopt the budget.
Okay, because you, you're like in the middle, you got like six weeks left. And less than that, so that we could read it and approve it. So, well, I mean, you're going to, that means that every department's got to cut like 20% or so to meet that 3 million. Because you guys got your work cut out for you.
Yes, it is, it is.
What's the plan?
It is, it is very challenging. Yeah, it is. It is very challenging and we will work on it and bring you another update soon.
So does that mean by the next meeting, you're going to have the, the deficit down a lot more?
We will be working on it and bring it down, yeah, as much as we can, you know, within the limitations we have right now.
So by the next council meeting, you'll have the recommended budget to, to, to reduce the deficit down?
We'll be pretty close. The next meeting will be the first meeting in June and we'll be pretty close at that. We'll have something to present to the city council. There still may be changes and adjustments. And then come back the second meeting in June, and that would be a plan to have a public hearing and present, present a budget for adoption at that second meeting in June. That's the plan. Thank you.
All right, just, this is, I just want to remind all the staff members, they're tough times and we obviously know that there's a lot of residents out there that have literally lost their jobs. I met up with the total of, hold on, let me list the list here, 16. So out of the 16, four have lost their job. The others are pending and several of the last ones that I have listed here are having major financial problems. So just remember, this decision is based on the community. So the community has to be placed first. So we're going to have to meet and make sure that you look at every area within your department and chief, a reminder, including that jail. You need to make sure that you make contact with the, with the actual vendors to reconsider the 389,000 or whatever it is. Their memory used to be like close to 400,000. And if they can't, then let's, let's bid for another potential vendor in that area. So this is a message across the board. We are going to balance this budget. No different than the private sector conducts these type of businesses. It's very important for us. So even if it means that we have to riff a staff, it's going to happen. We're going to have to balance this budget somehow. These are the residents that depend upon us.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Any other questions?
No, Mayor, I just want to chime in on what you're saying. I think it's up to staff to come back with these required recommendations. There's going to be a lot of hard decisions to make, but, but it's up to staff. You guys got to, you know, work on it and reduce it down. It's unfortunate that we are in this position, but it's the whole country, not just Baldwin Park, of the whole country, you know, it's, it's, the job rate out there is worse than the depression. And, you know, we're going to have to make some hard decisions and, and balance this budget. We can't continue using the reserve funds, you know, to, to go year to year, but we're going to run out next year if you use that money today. So I think you're just going to have to buckle down for one year and then just take a look at how the next year's come through. But, you know, unfortunately, we're going to have to make some hard decisions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions on the budget?
Thank you. Nope. Well, I just wanted to read what my, my council member Ricardo Pacheco, as you know, 2007, we made major cutbacks. There was a, and then I believe sometime three, four, five years there later, we were also struck again and we had to make some very tough decisions. So I know everyone's doing a good job. These are tough times, but we have to put the community first. All right, thank you. Okay, let's go on to, any other questions by anyone? If not, at this point, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item that we have here. Well, real, real quick, we're going to have public input. We have the Ms. Jean M. Ayala that has input from various persons that send in information. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. The first one is from Steve Bennett. And Steve Bennett has included a letter, counsel, and he's also included a document that I'll be forwarding to you because it's very lengthy. This is by Steve Bennett, Area Manager for TNT Fireworks, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight, you are discussing the possible suspension of the sales of safe and fireworks by local nonprofit groups in the city of Baldwin Park. I would like to share with you what TNT has done and is currently doing to meet the requirements of the County of Los Angeles Health Department and any requirements they may have during this time of firework sales. As you know, the county extended the stay-at-home order last week, but most continue to relax restrictions. Currently, curbside sales are allowed. And I am not sure if you can cite a more curbside business than safe and sane fireworks. The county also recognizes door sales for retail businesses as approved where a customer is serviced at a door or a window. Again, we fit that model extensively as retail customers and are not allowed inside the fireworks stands. We have signage and are currently working on training stand operators on how to implement those safety requirements. We are doing our part to ensure that our stand operators, your nonprofit organizations will be following all rules and guidelines in relation to COVID-19 at the time the sales will begin. Provided with these comments are the TNT fireworks COVID-19 protocols, which were sent to the city of Baldwin Park last week and the County of Los Angeles so that you can be aware of the great lengths we have gone to, to ensure compliance with the ability of your local nonprofit organizations to safely sell fireworks as a fundraiser. These organizations use these funds to support your community. There is no bigger time than now that your community will need their support, this support. Please review the document and you will see that we have taken a very protective approach to all of your current situations from the ability to provide physical distancing inside the fireworks stand to the ability to help guide customers while observing that same safe distance requirement. The July 4 holiday is probably going to be the first holiday weekend that we as residents of LA County are those and those in Baldwin Park will be able to celebrate outside their home safely. The residents of Baldwin Park will want to have an activity that can, that they can perform with the members of their family, the same people they are quarantining with at their homes. Those residents are already practicing those requirements when they shop for groceries or order takeout food. They are going to want to be able to celebrate our nation's birthday, eat some good food and enjoy some relaxation. Residents understand the situation extremely well, but they are going to celebrate somehow. Let us work together to make sure that they have a safe and legal way to do this. I also point out that currently we do not have any way of knowing what the future holds. The county restrictions that are current may not be the same in four weeks. Why must we make this decision right now? We are not even in the month of June and we should not guess what the future holds. As you know, the briefings are daily and the updates are often. We have time to make a decision and we support the idea of following the recommendations of the LA County Health Department. We just do not know what those will be in a few days, much less in a few weeks. We ask that you conditionally approve the application unless we have more information from the health department and we are able to have a better understanding of the requirements for the July 4 holiday. Thank you. And that's submitted by Steve Bennett. And the next one? Excuse me. The next one is submitted by Gail Puliat, excuse me, the name. City of Baldwin Park Mayor and City Council Members for the fireworks stands that the American Legion holds every week in July is such a privilege and a much needed fundraiser for our unit. This year with COVID-19 and being shut down, our fundraising abilities have been non-existent. This year, the fireworks stand will be our main source of income to fund the many outreach programs we do such as the first responder luncheons in September and our annual Christmas party for the kids in December, which is open to the community. The funds we earn during the fireworks stand pay for those functions and without it would jeopardize our ability to provide them again this year. We do understand the concerns and we will abide by any and all regulations provided in order to open the stand this year. Also, I feel that July will be a month that can bring the community back together after all the closures and staying-at-home orders hopefully will be lifted by this holiday. It's important to remind the community that we are here to serve and help them and being available during this time, I believe, will be beneficial. Thank you for your consideration. Melissa Wagner, Auxiliary President, Abraham Lincoln, Unit 241, Alfred Puliat, Vice President, Abraham Lincoln, Post 241, American Legion. And those are the, the end of the public comment.
All right, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk Ms. Jean M. Ayala. All right, so at this point, we'll continue on with the agenda. We'll go over to the consent calendar, which is have items one, is it two, am I correct? No, item one, which is consideration of adopting Resolution Number 2020-2021, a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city of Baldwin Park and Baldwin Park Statewide Community Development Authority, CS-CDA, Open Property Assess Clean Energy Pace Program. So anyone have any, at this time, any questions? If not, I'm going to move for approval.
Mayor?
Go ahead. Yes, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
I'm going to recuse myself for possible conflict of interest on that item. So I will not vote for it. I'm going to mute myself out and you guys do what you need.
All right, well, the Madam City Clerk has taken note, documented that. Thank you, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco. At this point, I'll go ahead and move.
Mayor, before you go on, there's a resident saying that his, their comments were not read.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Madam City Clerk, there's the check and see. Do we have them? Does anyone have access to it to send it to the city clerk? Councilmember Alejandra Avila, do we know where it's at?
It was, should have been sent to City Clerk.
She's indicating that Ms.
Let me check, hold on.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, while we wait, while we wait for that, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself on this item as well. Only because I wasn't able to check in with our city attorney and, you know, because of my experience with the PACE programs. So I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself just out of an abundance of caution.
All right, that's very well noted, Councilmember Monica Garcia. So at this point, we're still waiting, Councilmember Alejandra Avila regarding that email that attorney or.
So it was just forwarded to me and I forwarded to Jean Ayala and it was sent to J Ayala at BaldwinPark.com. So I just forwarded to her again.
All right, she's going through her email, so we'll await that. All right, let's go ahead, let's go ahead on this item. Then what we'll do, we'll break and come back to the city clerk, allowing her time to find the emails that were sent by Councilmember Alejandra Avila. So at this point.
It was sent to her, sorry, at 4:49 and I just forwarded to her.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so, and I'll, thank you. At this point, I will go ahead and make a, a motion to pass the property, the Community Development Authority, CS-CDA, Open Property Assess Clean Energy Pace Program. Though that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any objections? Second, any objections? All right, no objections, uh, so we'll move forward. Okay, the City Clerk is still going through it, so at this point, uh, we'll go to Report of Officers, item two, which is the reconsideration to approve.
I have it here if you'd like for me to read it.
You know what, at this point, yes, go ahead. That's fine.
Let me open it again. Hold on a second. Okay, this is from Danny Damien, Realtra Mortgage Loan Agent. Says, "Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Danny Damien, resident. I would like to speak on Agenda Item Number Two, reconsideration to approve the hiring of the Assistant Chief of Police position instead freeze one police commander position. During the May 6, 2020 City Council meeting, the council approved on a 3-1 vote the reorganization of the Police Department within amendment made by Councilmember Paul Hernandez to place the position of Assistant Chief of Police on the hiring freeze until January 2021. But notice that the mayor has requested this item be reconsidered. According to the last council meeting, the city is facing a $3 million deficit and is looking into budget cuts with possible layoffs and/or furlongs. All of our city events have been canceled for the remainder of the year, which will eliminate the need for police over time. If you hire the Assistant Chief of Police now, it will cost the city an additional $150,800 from the general fund which we don't have. How do you justify hiring the Assistant Chief of Police at a time when all departments have in order to make budget cuts? It is in the best interest of the city to freeze the hiring of the Assistant Chief of Police until January 2021 and save the city the additional $150,800 desperately needs. Keep in mind that the COVID-19, the city will be losing sales tax revenue which will only increase our budget deficit even more. Please reconsider hiring the Assistant Police Chief until January 2021 and see where the city is financially at the time." And that was it.
All right, thank you. And thank you very much to Mr. Damien if he's hearing us for, for, for his input. All right, so at this point, the item two, which is a reconsideration to approve the hiring of an Assistant Chief of Police position, then instead freeze one year of police commander position. Now, let me, first of all, the reason why I placed this on here is okay, all right. So at this point, wrote, wrote before, quick, the City Clerk has reminded me that we're bringing back a Councilmember Monica Garcia and also Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco since they were, had to recuse themselves from voting. Okay, all right. So while noting the record, the reason why I place this on here is for us, of course, to reconsider. It's not something that has to be done now. Uh, my concern is that we currently do not have a command staff in the Police Department. And we've talked about this position, uh, be, becoming uh, a, a, a part of the Baldwin Park, which fits the, the, the overall commander and, and having an Assistant Police Chief. And again, we'll, I'll probably bring it back, because there may be a possibility that there may be a retirement looming in the air, but we don't know. So it wouldn't be additional costs. It would be combining, uh, two positions into one. But I'm not going to get into the, the, the whole demographics of this, other than I just want to bring that, uh, that to the council members.
Okay, so I just, um, have a question on this item. So it, just to make clear, so you're the one that asked to be, to put this on the agenda, wasn't, but it was not the Chief of Police that asked for this to be put on, Chief?
I did.
Did you? Okay, so Chief, um, a quick question. Are you there? Chief?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so I, I, I understand when we first voted on this, you recommended that we hire Assistant Chief of Police because in the future it will save us some money. However, we voted two weeks ago to have a freeze on it. And I, I thought that you had put this on here on the agenda because you felt we needed to go forward with it. What is your thoughts on this?
Well, um, it's no secret that, that I wanted Assistant Chief, um, to help me move this Police Department forward and to accomplish the goals that we have set forward. Uh, and certainly the sooner the better. But based on the news that I'm hearing and, and the fact that our future revenue is based on the fact, and everybody's hinging on the fact of our economy opening up and money coming in. Based on the fact that the county has extended the stay-at-home order and there's no date, there's a question mark. That concerns me greatly. And so that and what I heard today, the responsible thing for the chief to do i- is, is to support what the council, uh, did two weeks ago and just put it off just for now, just for now. And of course, if, if the budget situation changes anytime soon, absolutely, we should bring him or her in.
So you're a complete agreement that, that you would be fine. I, as I, I already see you guys are doing a, a good job. And I understand you need an Assistant Chief of Police, but we can do without it if we wait to see what's happening until January 1st of 2021, correct?
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's a bitter pill to swallow, but I, I don't see there's any choice. The response for us to do is just, just to hold off to save that money when, when we're looking at millions of dollars in deficit. And so part of my job is, okay.
I appreciate your honesty. Thank you, Chief, very much.
Yeah, and just wanna, just for, to clear the record, as I indicated, again, one, one, one captain position, yeah, that officer has retired. And again, as I mentioned, it, there's a possibility that an additional one may retire, but I'm not, I don't have the date or confirmation. So at this point, we'll review as needed and as, as we go on, so.
So we can review it as needed. I agree. Uh, but for right now, the, the other captain we still have in place, so we would have, let's say you were to move forward, you would have to pay the Assistant Chief and the captain because we really have no idea when the captain will be retiring. So, you know, I, I still continue to feel, uh, like Mr. Hernandez said, and, uh, we all agree to go ahead and freeze this until 2021. Thank you.
And or, and or as needed. So we want to make that for the record.
Well, looking at the budget, I believe 2021 would be a good time to look at it again.
Okay, well, that's fine. So at this point, we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and, uh, the next item was the City Council, uh, City Clerk, City Treasurer, Staff Request and Communication, uh, requested by Mayor, oh, that's me. Um, all right, let me just say this. I've been in contact with the Mayor of Azusa, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, also, uh, from the city of Irwindale um, and the city of Almani. So what they, what they, what they have, let me just read this before. It's discussion and direction to staff to assist in patriotic home decorations. Sorry about that. Let me go first. Contest to celebrate 4th of July as a community. Uh, those interests can, can decorate their homes and register their homes in the contest by emailing photos by assigned deadline. Voting can occur during the timeframe given. Possible winning categories, most creative, most patriotic, a community of favorites. Those selected will be awarded along sign acknowledging the recognition. All of this can be, be done through social distancing and stay-at-home orders. So I just want to, let, let's do something nice for 4th of July for our community. Uh, all right, so is everyone in support of that? I mean, we don't need a motion. I'm just.
As long as it's not costing us anything, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, it's free. And then the next, thank you, Councilmember Alejandra. The next one is a discussion and deliberation on canceling the fireworks stands this year due to the COVID-19 and private direction, uh, to city staff. As I mentioned, and I was a little ahead of myself, I spoke to the Mayor of the city of Azusa, uh, also Councilman, or the Mayor of the city of Almani. They're, they're kind of trying to look and see what we're doing. Uh, Irwindale, just this week, uh, canceled their entire fireworks, uh, um, event, meaning the stands and what have you. And then I started thinking, spoke to the Mayor of Almani, uh, Mr. Quinteros, and it didn't seem like it was full support in Azusa. I, I think it's important for us, I mean, we've been, all of us have been locked in and, and our residents do deserve to have some type of patriotic event on 4th of July. So I think it's in the best interest for us, even though I, I had thought different. I think it's something that's important, uh, to be able to celebrate and have, uh, however, we're going to, I missed, to make sure that, that, uh, that, that safe distancing are, are, are being uh, um, adhered to i- if, if in fact, we're gonna go on that route. Councilmembers have any, any concerns, questions, or?
Mayor, you, you are, are talking about opening up the fireworks stands to sell, not to have the fireworks event, correct?
Yeah, no, yeah, the fireworks event, we can because of the amount of people that we would gather. So that one, I think we decided that several, several meetings ago, where we just kind of went over that. But, yeah, you are correct. You are correct.
And you know, uh, considering and what the gentleman read earlier, um, Mr. Steve Bennett, he is correct. All of our, our schools, sports, and a lot of our nonprofits, they rely on the 4th of July to provide for their teams, whatever it is. They may need uniforms, you know, equipment, whatever it is. That is one of the major profit earning, uh, events that they have. I, I know, like he said, July 4th is still over a month away and maybe depending, uh, at this time, it is a good idea to continue and, uh, allow the fireworks. But depending on how the situation evolves, I mean, leave that room so that if we have to cancel, cancel and that nobody, uh, that everybody gets their money back in case they had to put anything down. Because again, i- it benefits our whole community. It benefits especially our youth. So I am in agreement. I, I think we should try to move forward with this. Again, following health guidelines and making sure that everything's still okay by, by then, I think it would be a great idea. And we will be staying in our own houses, uh, with our own families. So I think it's a great idea, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, you know, I'm, I'm open to have it, you know, to continue to move forward. My only, I have some, uh, some, some hesitation in regards to this. Um, because as we all know, you know, each year, uh, you know, it's not necessarily a family member, uh, that stays at their house. Uh, you know, we all live here in Baldwin Park and we know how festive, uh, everybody likes to get. Um, so I would say that, you know, the only item I would, uh, speak to is, you know, if the county's uh, stay-at, or stay-at-home order continues and the social distancing and the number of people that are allowed, uh, you know, at a home, uh, because currently it's just those that live in a home and no other outside visitors. Uh, my fear is other people are gonna be visiting other people's homes, uh, during this time, knowing that, you know, our city will be allowing these type of activities, uh, here in our backyard. So for health and public safety reasons, uh, that is something for which I want to make sure that I'm on the record. Uh, you know, given, you know, what the county, uh, may or may not do, um, you know, in the next couple of weeks. But, you know, in the sense of moving forward, uh, I see nothing wrong with that in, you know, for plan, you know, to plan for the best, um, if that's possible. But, you know, if the county, uh, you know, still has its restrictions in regards to the number of people that are able to be, uh, at home, um, it's gonna be very hard for me to support this. I do completely understand all the local nonprofits, including our churches and so forth, and our cheer squads and everyone else that, uh, you know, fundraises during this times, but, you know, also during this period, uh, those type of activities, some of those the activities are not happening in our cities, uh, right now. Um, so, you know, for some, it, it might be a bigger financial burden than others, but, uh, I do see the overall health of our community in order to be, you know, uh, for us to be able to get out of this COVID-19 uh, in a much prosperous place and not be dealing with this, uh, moving forward. Because as of today, uh, we had over 200 residents that have the COVID-19, um, and I'd hate to see that number increase, uh, because we allow, uh, you know, 4th of July's, uh, fireworks sales in our city. Thank you.
Yes, and that's why I said, based on whatever the Health Department also, uh, provides to us.
Thank Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Hernandez, Councilmember Alejandra Abila, why don't we do this? We'll bring it back to the next meeting and, and let's see what the county, uh, is, decision is, uh, because I know we're gonna go all the way up to July. Does Councilmember agree to that? Bring it back?
Mayor, yeah. This is Monica Garcia. Um, I also agree that we need to hear from the Department of Public Health. And, um, I spoke with the Mayor of Azusa as well, and I understood that they were gonna take up the item on Monday, and I'm curious to know what they decided.
They didn't have the votes. They did not have the votes. I spoke to him. So he's trying to call for an emergency meeting, but he doesn't think it may be possible. That's what.
So, so they, so the item did not pass, so they're gonna continue with the fireworks?
I guess it's gonna go for, for the discussion at another meeting.
Oh, I see. Okay, so there was no action taken on the item?
That's correct.
So then I would, I would ask Shannon, um, Shannon, could you, in the follow-up, could you come back and, uh, provide us with the information on what some of the surrounding cities are doing? Because Mayor Gonzalez did make a good point in that if other cities are allowing, or I'm sorry, if the, if other cities have prohibited the, the fireworks at our homes, um, and we allow that, then it's most, he may, he raised a good point in that we're probably gonna get, you know, relatives and, and friends and visiting our city, um, because it's allowed. So I would like to just know, what does Public Health say? What are some of the surrounding cities doing? And also, I'd like to know, what are the revenues that are generated, um, on average for the, for the nonprofits and, um, the fundraising that's generated?
Just to let everyone know, out of the 18, I believe only four have applied. Am I correct on that? Shannon?
Um, that, that's correct, Mayor. And I think I have some of those answers that have been asked tonight. Um, typically, we have 14 slots. As of now, only four have made applications. How that, however, it could increase. Um, we probably should get some direction tonight because my understanding is, um, they, the, 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 the applications are due July 1st, so they're gonna be turning those in and, and being granted applications if you have enough information to decide.
Well, Shannon, our CEO Shannon, why, why don't we wait for the following? Let's get more information from the county. I, I definitely want to support it.
Sure.
What the county is doing now. We also, we also need to take in consideration, Irwindale is not having theirs, so that means we're gonna get them, as we usually get all of West Covino coming here. They don't celebrate, they don't have it. But, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Yeah, Mayor, just, uh, food for thought here. Um, and being practical is that if we don't have then everyone's gonna go to other stores or stands around the county. They're gonna go to Walmart, they're gonna go to Home Depot, or whatever store sells fireworks products. They're gonna buy them and they're gonna get together at their home anyway. I think that if we get a if we get a, their COVID plan as to make sure that they have fireworks stands, everybody standing six feet apart. Uh, those that are within the, the stand that are working there are, have a six feet apart and you're wearing masks. Just kind of like if you go to 7-Eleven today or any other store or any restaurant, you're always wearing your mask and your gloves and you're buying the product. And I think we apply the same rules to these stands. I think it'll be safe. I think it'll be fine.
I don't think the concern, I don't think the concerns is a stand. The concern is the people gathering at homes and people from other cities coming in too. Or, for example, let's say I invite people from wherever my family members live. So now we have people from other cities gathering in more than 10 at my homes. I think that's what the concern is, Mayor.
So, um, Mayor, if I could, I do have the information from the county. They have approved the sale of the fireworks, um, as discussed. They have approved party supplies to sell at curbs, curbside too. So I think they understand that those things may be used in a party. However, as was stated, they're still limiting all of those gatherings to immediate family and no more than 10 people. I do have a list of the cities that have approved it and, and denied it up to this point. Um, what you may want to also consider is there's a number of cities, um, that have allowed it. Um, which means that people could buy those fireworks and still bring them in and use them in our city because it, you know, they're, they're legal to use here.
That's true.
So I have that list if, if you want to, to, um, hear that. I can go over that real quick.
Yeah, why don't you cover that, cover that. Go ahead and do that.
So the cities that have approved it so far are South Almani, Pico Rivera, Bellflower, Lakewood, La Mirada, Hawthorne. Um, City of Industry is moving ahead to approve it. Alhambra approved it. Rosemead has approved it. Um, Temple City's out, taking the applications in and, and will likely approve it. Um, El Monte was, continued it, um, and didn't, didn't, didn't complete the item. Uh, La Puente, it appears that it'll be approved. Um, Azusa, Azusa voted to suspend it to, by a three-to-two vote, but I guess it's gonna be brought back on the agenda.
That's correct.
Um, as same with Irwindale, they've actually voted to suspend it, but it sounds like it's also gonna be put back on the agenda to be reversed. So, yeah, as noted, you know, the sale is, is legal. Um, and I, but I think the concern that's been expressed is that people will not, um, understand, you know, the, uh, the 10-person gathering limit is still in effect. I know the people at the fireworks stands um, have offered to hand out those type of flyers and educate people when they buy them to let them know, um, what all the rules are still in effect.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting because again, like we all mentioned, there's going to be people from other cities coming in, whether we sell them here or not. It's just gonna be a matter of us making sure that we are following the Health Department uh, regulations. uh, regulations, depending what they are at that time, and that our residents are well aware of what is expected, which will be, it will be difficult, but it's something to consider.
Yes, Councilmember, it's Vice, Vice Mayor, uh, Hernandez.
Appreciate it, um, Chief, if you could get on the phone, please?
Go ahead, did we lose you? Hello?
I'm waiting for the chief.
Oh.
Yes.
Chief, thank you very much, um, considering that this is gonna be your first time uh, for our Fourth of July extravaganza that we have, uh, historically each and every year. Um, you know, is staff going to be prepared to go and, you know, inform residents and households when we begin to receive, uh, the numerous phone calls that are gonna be happening on Fourth of July?
Yes, actually, I, I think what's key is education. We've got at least a month to get the word out exactly what the expectations are, what the rules and regulations are. In addition, I, I want to say that we're committed to working with the nonprofits. There are protocols for, for the fireworks stands, and we are gonna commit to meet with every one of them to make sure that we're assisting them to the point we can to make sure that, number one, they're being safe, but they're complying with the protocols uh, set uh, down by public health. But the key is education, I've already directed, uh, our staff to have more patrols to the extent we can, uh, on that night. And so we'll have a presence there. We've already reached out to the LA County Fire Department, see how they can help us. For example, you know, can they have patrols? And so, uh, we'll definitely have a presence, uh, but we want our community to have a good time, but we wanted to do it in a safe environment.
So you're essentially saying you're gonna be having staff, uh, you know, go out on patrol and inform residents if they're more than ten, or if it's more than immediate family, uh, having fireworks at their home, and if, and if, if needed, uh, you will instill and do violation, uh, you know, provide violations to the, uh, to the homeowners?
We're go- we're gonna do that to the best we can. I mean, certainly, uh, I'll be here and I'll be out in the streets myself and, and I'll assist the team as needed. But it, it, I mean, this is really a public health, health, I believe you spoke about it earlier in that kids like fireworks, and when certain fireworks go off, kids have a tendency to run in the middle of the street uh, and get in small groups, and we can't have that. Um, and so we're gonna do the best we can, and I think education, I'm going to work with the schools and the superintendent and see, we can partner with them in getting the word out, uh, and we're gonna, you know, use them too. Uh, but we'll have a presence the best we can, uh, on that night, a- a- and days leading up to that night, and, and a couple of days afterwards, because it's not with the Fourth of July, there will be fireworks days after the Fourth of July as well, so prior to that night and certainly afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, and just to remind you, Chief, it's already started. But, uh, go ahead, people, anyone else wishing to speak? Nothing? Okay, let's go, let me go ahead and, uh, so at this point, we're, I'll go ahead and make a motion to bring this back, uh, once we hear from the county, so I'll go and make a motion.
Second.
Any objections? So at this point, we'll have Madam City Clerk take roll call.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Hernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Lozano?
Yes, thank you, okay, pass as five zero, we'll bring it back, just, uh, further information from the county and get their input. All right, real quick, just for correction, the, um, Madam City Clerk, Ms. Gina Mayala has, uh, uh, stated that we needed the vote, do we do for number two, the reconsideration?
Uh-uh.
Uh, uh, to approve the hiring of an assistant chief, so that's been put off, so do we need a vote on that?
We do.
Yes. Let's find this regard, let's go ahead and move on. Okay, I'm gonna go and move on to the next one, which we have the recess to close session. So at this point, I will, uh, wait for the Madam City Clerk and everyone else, uh, we're going out to a different, uh, are we going out to a, a different app?
Yes, we have to log off.
Okay, we're logging off, thank you.
Um, yes, Mayor, we'll have to log off, and then those involved in the closed session have another number. We will have to log back into this, um, for you to report out at the end.
All right, thank you.
Hi Mark.
Hi Shannon.
So are we, we're live on uh?
Yes.
On audio?
Yes.
Okay, and the mayor should be joining back in and he will report out.
Okay.
Can you hear me Mark? This is a.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
And just so everybody knows, we're, we're live on audio.
Testing, testing?
Gotcha.
Okay, all right, we're back here to uh out of closed session, everyone with it, with us? Everyone present?
Uh yes, Mayor, um and I think we're live, so.
Okay, all right.
We have a forum, yes.
All right, so at this point, uh we're back uh from a closed session, there is nothing to report, I'll go ahead and move to adjourn, that is my motion.
Second.
Checking by who?
Avila.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we're back, open, uh well, it was open anyways, the city council uh meeting, so we don't have anything else to report here, just want to say a couple of items. The first one, I have visited some of the businesses uh in Ballin Park, this restaurant, the small mom and pop restaurants, they are anxiously awaiting word from, as I continue to say, from the governor, the county. Uh so when they could start opening, some of them are now preparing uh to have plexiglass in between uh various uh tables and so on and so forth, though. We obviously have not heard anything directly from the governor, we do know that this is going to expand until July, I hope that some of these businesses are able to make it because some of them, I mean, a good portion, they're not chain type of uh businesses, so. They, we may not see some of them reopening, and I, and I anticipate, I don't know where Starbucks will ultimately be, Starbucks has asked some of the businesses, if you haven't heard, for them to either reduce or reconsider the actual uh rent per month on them, so. Um just want to share that with everyone, that I hope we, we come to some type of a, a opening for the residents, I know Orange County Riverside, they're in a whole different timeline, and I realize, like I told the residents, we're uh over ten million LA county, so would not, bigger population. Uh so I just wanted to share that with you, but anyone else?
Um thank you, Mayor, and I'm checking with the health department weekly, sometimes daily, the last indication I got is um it's gonna be at least, they hinted that it's gonna be at least three to four weeks before restaurants are allowed to open. Um you probably all saw that the governor did relax the standards a little bit for the counties, um but still, in many cases, LA county can't open faster than the rest of the state because of our size, but.
Thank you.
I will let you know as soon as I have other information.
Yeah.
Shannon.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry, and moving forward, as a city, do we have a plan for our businesses, I know LA county will be providing plans, but we, you know, we're a smaller and it's a different type of city. Do we have a plan that our businesses will be following also once we have the okay to start reopening these small restaurants and businesses so that it works for us?
Um yeah, that, that's one of the thing that the county's developing, and they're gonna have um the minimum standards, so when we get those, we'll be able to look at them, um you know, if we need to add anything stricter, we can. Uh but as in the past, we'll use um code enforcement to distribute that information to the businesses and make sure they have the information and they understand us.
Okay.
And check up on, to see if they have questions.
All right, just so that they're aware ahead of time where that, where they need to be in order for them to open, thank you.
You know what, let me just also say uh that, you know, it is very tough for these restaurants, and they're looking forward to opening, however, it's going to be totally new, they're not going to be able to pack them up, so some of them may not survive, uh because that would be a major hit. Uh some of these local restaurants here are depend upon major crowds in the bars and eateries and so on and so forth, so stay tuned, that's all I have to say. Now, let me ask another question real quick. Has a business association or maybe to our community development, I think Ben has stepped out, have we reached out or are we in communication with the local businesses over uh some of these uh small business loans that may be available? Are we, are we spread, are we letting them know, uh I know the, Shannon, could you help me on that area?
Um yes, we're working both with the businesses and the business association, um San Gabriel Valley Chamber Commerce, Ben's working with them all. Um to get the information out, I know he's had code enforcement um try to deliver uh some of the information, although a lot of the businesses um were still closed, um but yeah, that is an ongoing. To get that information out, it's also on our website if anybody needs to go. to get that information out, it's also on our website, if anybody needs to go to it, um, also, we have a hotline on our website, um, that's open for residents and businesses to call in for information, and Ben and his staff are monitoring that daily and, uh, getting back to people who need help and, uh, helping them, uh, with their issues or giving them the proper direction.
Since the businesses are closed, do we not have their email information or phone numbers to contact them and give them the updates?
Um, we do have, um, their mailing address information, it's one thing, um, that Ben had recommended out of this, and we're working with financing business licenses, um, when we, um, give out business licenses, we're gonna request or require a, you know, an email for contact information.
Yeah, it's for those businesses that you can't make contact, you mail it out to them so that they're receiving it, and they're updated, I know it's more work on you guys, but that way they're updated on, on the possibilities of them getting whatever type of loans or assistance from the government.
Okay.
All righty, okay, council members, anyone else wishing to, uh, share any information? If not at this point, I'll go ahead and move for adjournment.
Second.
There's been a seconded by who, or whom? Who seconded?
Hernandez.
Oh, by Mayor Hernandez? All right, and no objections, if not at this point, uh, viva, virtu, Baldwin Park, have a good evening everyone, see you soon.
Good night everybody.
Good night.